You guys hear an echo on the line?
No.
Patient to getting up and running with this, it's our first time doing a full council meeting. And so with that, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
Like.
United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
Nation.
Under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. Item two is roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orson.
Sorry, I'm here. I'm by myself. I'm here.
Larson. Sit here. One show.
Here.
Hanson. Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Hey, thank you. Item three is the consent agenda. Three A, motion to approve city council minutes on March 16, 2020, March 18, 2020, special meeting and March 30, 2020, special meeting. B licenses approved new class C license with brew pub privilege and Sunday sales for the Iowa brewing project through 16 Grand Avenue. Subject to final approval by Iowa alcoholic beverages division. C is a motion to approve the implementation of Tyler Technologies Community Development Parks and Recreation. Cashiering point of sale and online payment modules from Tyler Technologies for a total cost of $67,096. D is a motion to approve the implementation of public works transfer station lighting upgrade project with materials purchased from the retrofit companies and labor from Pick Slatter Electric for a total project cost of $33,250. That's a CIP project. E is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds and budgeted transfers for the month ending March 31, 2020. F is a motion to approve Van Holland Lawn Service as a subcontractor for 2019 Fourth Avenue Southwest Sidewalk Improvement Project. And that concludes the consent agenda.
So moved.
First by Tom.
I got it.
Second by Donovan. Questions, discussion related to these items? No. All right, hearing none. Let's see, we want to do roll call. You want to do them in, okay, what Teresa's going to do, I think the easiest thing, we'll do a roll call vote in the same order of agenda item number two, so she'll read your name and then you can vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Orson.
Hi.
Larson. Is he here?
Uh, Tracy's on.
Excuse me, I just, okay, just couldn't hear. One show.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty. Is he there?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't see everybody. Okay. Yes, thank you.
Okay, yep. Item four A is the public hearing on capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2021 through the fiscal year 2025. I declare the public hearing open. Have we received any written comments against?
We have none.
Oral comments against? Written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing closed. I would entertain a motion to approve the City of Spencer Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2025.
I'd reintroduce that.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Lauren. We'll do the same roll call, even though with the motion, we'll just go ahead and read the names.
Nelson.
Hi.
Orson.
Hi.
Larson.
Raise your hand if you want.
Okay.
Oh, he doesn't have audio on his laptop.
I can't. One show.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know my situation. I'm going to go off for a little while. I got to talk to my wife.
Okay, take care, Bill.
Yeah, I'll stay on.
Okay. Uh, item five, new business, five A is a resolution concerning the satisfaction of the obligation of the Spencer Youth Baseball and Softball Associations to reimburse the city for a portion of the cost of the Pedestrian Lighting Improvement Project.
Uh, Mayor, I have some, I have some comments on this. Do we have discussion or?
Yeah, we'll, let's get up first and second and then we can have discussion.
So moved.
First by Tom.
Again.
Second by Donovan. Discussion questions. I know Amanda and Jared probably, maybe Brian have some explanations for this and some questions from the council.
Sure. My questions, uh, in reading the, um, in the summary where the, um, excuse me, the comments were the, was a loose agreement, no formal agreement uh, was found or able to be found. First of all, I want to clarify this. I think it's a, it was a good project. Mike, I got a couple of questions. We're talking about $125,000 here is a pretty significant amount of money, if I do the math right. 54,000 has been paid, 71 outstanding. Um, seems like a large sum of money with very little oversight. I guess is my, my first concern. That being said, I see where this is going. Uh, my, my second question, my first question, how did it happen? How could it happen without oversight? And then how can we prevent this from going, going forward from recurring so that when we have good projects like this come up with participation with the city? In my opinion, I think we should look at getting something written, formal policy, or at least take a look at this pretty, pretty hard. Um, I guess that's just my, my two cents. I'd like to see something, um, I guess if we could pursue that.
Yeah. Yeah, I can give a little background and Jared can certainly chime in if he's able. So, um, my understanding of how this, this came to be is, is prior to my time here, um, the lighting project came up. And initially, uh, the, the, the cost estimates, um, were less than what the project caused, what the big costs came back at. And the council had discussed doing the project in phases, um, in order to meet those costs rather than paying for it all at once. Um, there were some conversations between the youth league and the former parks director. They were willing to, to help. They wanted to see it happen. Um, and a loose agreement was kind of put into place. Um, sorry, it's echoey in here. I apologize. So they have, they have met, um, the obligations thus far. Um, and in a conversation with the current, um, youth league president and the previous one, um, their request was, hey, is there anything that they could do? They, they invest a lot of dollars into the ball fields. Um, doing work that frankly, um, our parks department probably should have been doing for a lot of, lot of years. Um, and in, invest a lot of time and resources in doing that. So when we looked at this obligation, um, we felt that it warranted the discussion with the Parks and Rec Committee. And it warranted the discussion with the council, um, twofold. One, because, uh, they are our fields and they are our lights. Um, and they benefit the, the entire community. And two, uh, the amount of work that they do out there on, um, on our property, uh, is, is pretty significant. And, um, the service that they offer to the community is open to all of the youth of the community. It's not a private league. Um, type, type organization. Um, and we felt that that warranted bringing it, um, to the committee. The committee met geez, a month ago now, um, and had a very similar discussion and, um, maybe Tom can speak as, as the committee chair or Donovan, um, who serves on the committee, that it really made sense to not encumber them, um, with continued debt so that they can continue to provide services, um, to the youth and continue to do some of those, um, maintenance operation, uh, items out at Pedersen Park. We do have an agreement with them, not related to the lighting project, um, that outlines things that they will do. Um, at the fields and things that the parks department will do. And we also believe that that, uh, at a future date needs, needs to, um, have a serious look, uh, taken on it.
Yeah, Amanda, I'm not questioning the, I think the project was a good project. My question is, how do we prevent it from this type of a situation happening again with some other project? In other words, documentation, um, you know, formal agreements, oversight, that type of thing.
Yeah, I think a good recent example is the lighting project that we, um, are partnering with Main Street on. So we do have a formal agreement with them that lays out, um, exactly what the city is contributing, what they are contributing, how that those monies will be received. Um, so we will retain a portion of their, um, SMID dollars to, to pay back the lights over, I think it's 10 years. Is that right, Brian? I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, but there is a formal agreement in place, um, between the city and Spencer Main Street for the lighting project. And I would anticipate that going forward, any joint projects would follow those same, um, parameters that we'd have a written agreement in place.
So that would become kind of somewhat your footprint for going forward for these types of projects.
Yep.
Yep, that was my.
I couldn't hear your first question. I apologize. I just.
Right, again, I, I think the project was a good project. I was just more looking at the, the term that was used, uh, loose agreement and nothing that could be found. Because there's, you know, boards change. Positions change. So I just think it sounds like you've already got something in place, Amanda, so that's where I was going with it. That's it for my questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Amanda. Any other questions or discussions related to this motion? George, you have something? You want to unmute yourself, George? Or left hand corner there. There you go. Oh, you got it?
Used to be.
Didn't change.
There you go.
There we go. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, mention that when this project was started, um, one of the things about it, um, that was brought up was the tournaments and the things that they have out there that bring a tremendous amount of people to the city, which helps of the entire city. Uh, it's not just our little league and, and the church leagues or whatever, but it, they, they bring a tremendous amount of people to town when they have those tournaments. So that's all I had.
Uh, George, that wasn't my point. I hope you heard my question earlier or not. Mine was more, I wasn't questioning the, the validity of the project. I was questioning the lack of oversight on this particular project from the dollar standpoint. And Amanda's, is clarified that with what they've got in place going forward.
I'll, I'll try this to see if I'm heard. Mayor, this is Don.
Yeah, go ahead, Don.
Okay, I don't think I'm seen, but apparently I'm heard. I would add to what's already been said that, um, this relatively loose agreement, Lauren, was, was not accidental. It was intentional. It was really a pledge because the little league, uh, entity doesn't have any assets. Um, a formal written agreement really wouldn't mean anything because there'd be nobody to collect from. Uh, and that was understood by the mayor and council going in. So it was really more a pledge of good faith support, uh, for the project, which, which they have performed and which we had records of what the pledge was and, and how it's been treated. So that, that might add a little to responding to your question.
Next, Don.
Any other comments or questions prior to the vote?
Was anything sent out to them about them needing to take off the $10 lighting fee since we're forgiving this or or changing this?
That was communicated to them.
Okay, just want to make sure of that.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing nothing, we'll call the vote here. Teresa.
Nelson.
Hi.
Orson. Oh, okay. Larson.
Hi.
Reed.
Bye.
Moriarty. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries, a resolution actually. Five B is a resolution approving contract and performance and/or payment bonds for the 2020 West Fourth Street Underground Improvement Project with the lost construction.
I'll make that.
First by Lauren.
A second.
Second by Donovan. Discussion or questions on this? Okay. Call the vote, Teresa.
Nelson.
Hi.
Orson. Still away. Larson. One show.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty. Okay.
Thank you. Resolution carries. Item five C is a resolution awarding contract for the 2020 intake replacement project, Decore Jergens Construction LLC for $47,000, 600, $47,634. The quotes were taken on March 27th, 2020.
I move the resolution.
First by George.
Second.
Second by Tom. Discussion or questions on this? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Teresa.
Nelson.
Hi.
Orson. Larson. One show.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you.
Resolution carries. Item five D is a motion to approve the mini excavator from Bobcat for $66,668.10 from trailer, oh, and trailer, uh, associated with the Bobcat. From Cardells for $5,704. So we have the two items there, the Bobcat and the trailer. The Park and Cemetery Divisions. This is a 2021 CIP item.
So moved.
First by Tom, second by Lauren. Discussion or questions on this?
Yeah, I do have one question, um, pertaining to the trailer side of this. I was just looking at the documentation that was provided. Um, I see the difference in the dollars between the two, between promo and cardells. My question was, looks like the Cardell trailer is a 14 footer and it looks like what the other folks quoted was larger. Um, the Cardell trailer doesn't come with a warranty. If I'm looking at it correctly, the the other one comes with a five-year warranty and it's an 18 foot, or excuse me, 16 foot bed. I just, my question was, um, is it, did we really have an apples to apples comparison on the, on the trailer bit?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, Jared.
Yeah, so the trailer bid, so Gieland's, when we went and got the quote, didn't offer a 14-foot, uh, trailer, um, at that time. And so, um, actually the shorter one works better out at the cemetery on those curves and stuff and sure, being able to turn and, and work with that. And so that, that 14 footer is the smallest trailer that we could find that would accommodate that many excavators as far as weight and things like that, and still have the ability to maneuver it around the cemetery as well.
Sure, perfect. Thank you. That's, that's what I was looking for clarification. Yeah, thank you, Jared.
Yep. Any other questions or comments prior to the vote? Seeing none, we will call the vote. Teresa.
Nelson.
Hi.
Orson. Larson. One show.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. And now five E is a motion to approve quote for, uh, $54,000 from Turf Works. Rainbird distributor for materials and labor for replacement of electrical and mechanical components of the irrigation system at the Spencer Municipal Golf Course. This will be taken from the capital reserve fund and probably a repair project that's many, many, many years overdue. So this should, uh, rectify the nagging, uh, Band-Aids that Brian and his staff have had to be putting on this. With that, I would entertain a, a first and a second.
So I, we buy.
First by George.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Discussion questions for the staff on this?
Brian, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Um, does this satisfy you completely?
Yeah, I was very pleased with the discussions that I had with the distributor as well as a contractor through the process. So I spent quite a bit of time researching it in the off season, a lot of phone calls, a lot of, uh, communication with, uh, the Rainbird Company. So I feel very good about it.
Okay.
What's the timeframe of this project to be done?
Um, basically to order the materials is going to be approximately three weeks for delivery. Uh, the last time I spoke with the contractor, he was supposed to be starting a job in Nebraska at the beginning of this month. And he was figuring that he could fit us in once that project's done. So it would probably be at the end of the month. And then they were looking for, um, less than one, one week to complete the, the process on the golf course.
Would this cause any part of shutdown or anything?
Uh, basically what will happen, um, this will not cause any disruption to play on the golf course. Um, what it will potentially cause is the irrigation system will not be in use. Um, because the electrical system will be disconnected, but I will have the ability to charge the irrigation system in and manually turn on green stations. So, um, if the weather conditions aren't favorable, we'll still be all right. It'll just take a little bit of hand time to make it happen, but it'll be worth it.
Yeah, good.
He must be coming in with a pretty good sized crew to replace all those in one week.
Uh, yeah, there's 242, um, valve boxes that will need to be addressed. So they'll enter each valve box. Um, all the electrical components in, in the valve box will be replaced, reconnected, and, uh, it'll pretty much be just like a brand new system.
Awesome. Glad to hear that.
Hey, any other questions or discussion with this topic? Okay, with that, we'll call the vote. Teresa.
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson. One show.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. Item five F is a resolution confirming the City of Spencer employee compensation during the month of April, 2020. Uh, the staff's put a lot of time into this. I'm sure Don will chime in. This is, uh, a fairly complex issue, um, that has been addressed with a, uh, recommendation and I think a good write-up. So we'll get into some good discussion on this, uh, after we open it up. Is there a first?
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tom. Amanda, I'm just going to turn it over to you to lead the discussion on this one.
Uh, I said, just because I think it's easier, I will read, um, what I put on the cover page and then we can have discussions from there. Um, on March 31st, myself, Don, uh, Brian and Teresa met via conference call to discuss the many and ever-changing programs and new laws in the current place related to COVID-19 and how those would and could impact employees. Um, I believe around the point where employees who are able to work from home should be. And that our larger groups such as the street division should be split into two shifts with some employees working, uh, one week, some working the other. Um, in order to slow the spread and minimize exposure of COVID-19. Now, the county enacted similar procedures, uh, a week and a half ago. And as you will see, outline in Don's memo, the family's first act that provided additional sick leave to employees is not applicable to employees that are placed on a split shift or if work is not available to them. Um, unemployment does become an alternative. However, during our discussions, we have learned that there are implications to an employee's health benefits and retirement contributions if they are placed on unemployment during this time. Uh, because of those reasons and others outlined in the memo, and because this is an ever-evolving situation, uh, and asking that you approve, uh, the resolution before you tonight, uh, which provides for continued compensation and benefits for employees through the month of April, if and when their work schedules are disrupted. Uh, we don't know how long this is going to last, but we meet with the hospital and other area leaders daily. And at this time can reasonably assume that the, that the epidemic will peak in Iowa mid to late April. Should we need to continue with modified schedules into May or later, we will look at formal furloughs for employees and other options that may be available and bring a recommendation to you at that time. Um, additionally, this, uh, requested action is in line with how Clay County and the Spencer School Districts have chosen to handle their employees that have seen work disruptions to date.
Questions for the staff related to this?
I would just like to chime in that, uh, I'm sure this took a tremendous amount of time and energy and, um, with everything going on. You, you've been crazy busy with everything and, and appreciate your time and effort towards it. Um, I assume department heads and everybody was okay with this. Did you run into much uh, disagreement at all or?
You know, truthfully, no.
Good.
Um, I, I sent all of you, uh, just shortly before the meeting started, a memo outlining how internally, um, we're going to begin operating starting tomorrow. So employees who have the ability to work from home are going to start working from home with a few notable exceptions. Um, department heads, um, are going, the city hall department heads, uh, especially, um, are, are going to decide if they want to be in the building because it makes more sense for them with, with the work that they do or work from home. Um, street division and Mark can get into a little bit more in his report. And we're going to split into two shifts. We've, we're putting some additional, um, parameters in place at solid waste and have an exciting announcement about the transfer station, which we'll all be glad to hear, um, at the landfill. So, you know, I think we all collectively agree that, um, our goal right now is to provide minimal disruption to the public while also ensuring that we're protecting our employees, um, both from potential exposure, um, but potential, um, spreading of the virus. As we know that, um, it's, it's spread most often when someone's asymptomatic. And the more we can limit contact with one another and with the public, um, the, the better off we are. So, um, the, the memo I sent is probably iteration number three, but we all worked really well together on it and, and it's, it's fluid. So what, what works, uh, this week may not be what works next week, but we're looking for the flexibility, um, to be able to amend and, and maneuver through this, um, both as we learn operationally what works, but also as we continue to get guidance from the governor on, on what we can and can't do.
You, Amanda, any other questions or comments related to this?
I wanted to say that I thought everyone involved, uh, really took it seriously and they looked at all the ramifications of whether the health insurance would be furnished with the various options. And I think they did as well as they possibly could with what the government's given us at the present time. I applaud them for that.
Thanks, George. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing nothing, Teresa will call the vote.
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson. One show.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
And Moriarty.
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Resolution carries and uh we certainly appreciate all the uh staff adjustments and um coming to work every day with a good attitude, being leaders in the community. And we've said over the last several months that we wanted to be an employer of choice. And uh this is certainly something that I'm an employer who wants to make sure their employees are taken care of. These are the steps you take. And so again, we just appreciate everyone, appreciate the staff for putting this together. And we're all in it step by step. Five G is a motion to approve four subcontractors for the twenty twenty West Fourth Street Underground project uh with Vanderpole Excavating LLC, Van Hall and Lawn Service, Pixler Electric and Service Signing LLC. What's the dollar amount on that? So I can read that. Do you have a combined dollar amount? Anyone?
Um. For the subcontractors? We don't, we don't get a dollar amount. We just approve those subcontractors to work under the contract.
Okay, very good. So we will uh take a first and second on the motion as read.
I'll give you a first, Mayor.
All right, first by Ron.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Any questions or discussion related to this?
What are we talking about timeframe on the start of this? Is Jim there or is Jim out there?
Uh, Ross is on the call, I see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think um Bri- Brian had talked to the lost construction and they were talking about later in the summer or, or, or the second half of the construction season. So they're, they're shooting for sometime in August.
I didn't look at the timetable. How many days is this project gonna be?
Um, I, I'd have to, I'd have to double check and get back to you, Ron. I'm not sure what the breakdown was between uh Division One and Division Two right off the top of my head.
All right, thanks, Russ.
Anybody else? Seeing none, uh we'll call the vote. Teresa?
Nelson.
Hi.
Larson. One show.
Hi.
Hanson.
Hi.
Reed.
Hi.
Moriarty.
Hi.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Item six, Department Head Reports. We will start with the Planning Department. Steve, I think I see you on there. Yep, there you are.
All right, thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay, thanks. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. Uh, brief update of just some current uh activities going on in the Planning Department. Last Friday was the due date for the uh request for proposals for the Historic Preservation Commission's uh Downtown Design Guidelines Project. Uh, glad to report that we received four uh proposals on that project uh from four outstanding firms. Uh, there is a subcommittee formed of the HPC that's gonna be meeting tomorrow um to review those proposals and uh select uh those candidates that they want to interview. And uh we're looking to conduct interviews at the end of this week, um, obviously electronically. Uh, and then after that, uh, HPC will meet and uh be forwarding a recommendation for approval of a consultant on that project. Um, on another uh project that Planning Department is, is involved in, uh, we are working uh on a joint project with the Spencer Jobs Trust, which is a, a housing market study uh report uh for the City of Spencer. Um, the uh, a small subcommittee um uh interviewed uh candidates and a consultant has been hired uh for this project. And uh over the last uh week or so, I've worked to put together a steering committee uh formed of thirteen individuals uh in the community, uh both uh public and private sector, uh which I think we have an outstanding uh group uh representing this project. Uh, our first meeting with the consultant on the housing market study uh is scheduled for this coming Wednesday, April eighth. Um, and then I just wanted to do a quick shout out uh for the Census twenty twenty. Um, in the midst of all of this uh going on, uh, April first uh seemed to slip by really quickly. And uh I just want to remind everybody out there that uh that was the official Census Day, but the uh Census taking is, is uh up and running and ongoing. Um, if you're bored at home and you're stuck at home, uh, complete the census form, fill it out. Uh, if you don't want uh a door knocker showing up at your house uh in June or July, fill out the census form and send it in. It's uh very easy and the easiest way to complete the census this year is to go to twentytwentycensus.gov. You can respond online. Um, and then uh lastly, I just wanted to follow up with some uh exciting news from the Planning Department. Last Friday, I am pleased to report that uh Anna Harmon, uh the city's building code official, uh passed her E-two commercial electrical exam. Uh, so now Anna is certified E-one and E-two uh electrical inspector uh for the City of Spencer. So that's great news. And uh in the future, we will be contacting the state of Iowa and we will be talking to them about uh bringing back the commercial uh inspection process. Um, and then just lastly, quickly, our Planning Department, oddly enough, uh with everything going on, it seems like we are busier than ever. Uh, inspections have not slowed down. Uh, within the last week, we've had our number of permit requests um actually going up. Uh, I think today alone, uh, we've processed four or five uh permit requests uh for new projects. So uh, we're staying very busy. That's all I've got. And I'm glad to entertain any questions.
Just a comment. I did get around to doing my census today and it was just a few minutes. There's nothing to it.
Steve, one other comment I've got. I saw the numbers on plumbing permits, building permits and electrical permits for first quarter, I believe, like it sounds like. Year over year, um, I'm assuming that was down. I didn't know what last year's numbers were, but for that timeframe. And what you're seeing now, are you seeing a pickup? Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
Yeah. Um, that's a good point, Lauren. I, and I think you might have seen just the report from last month. I don't know if it was the entire first quarter. Um, we, we do uh create and publish a monthly reports. Um, I can tell you from a permit perspective, the month of March was slow. Um, I think part of that was still coming out of the winter season and, and now with the weather picking up, but I don't, I'm not sure if it, it, if it has anything to do with um everything going on in the world right now either, with people just wanting to uh ensure that they have permits in place uh to ensure that they have work to keep going. Um, I'm not sure what the uptick is specifically, but what we have seen a, a uh, an increase in the request for permits uh within the last week for sure.
Definitely encouraging. Thank you for your comments.
You bet.
Anything else for Steve? Appreciate your adjustments during this time. Uh, Library, Mandy?
Hello. Um, the library obviously is closed. Uh, we did uh, we did have a lot of things that were going on for the patrons. Um, a few of the things that we have are um that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking and all the animals decided they wanna come visit. Um. We extended the Wi-Fi hours to twenty-four hours and we posted the password to the Wi-Fi on the front door because we know that one of the things that people rely on us a lot is to utilize our Wi-Fi for a variety of reasons. Um, particularly now when we have a lot of people that are having to file unemployment. Um, so that has been utilized significantly because I just got our end of the month numbers from, for our Wi-Fi usage. And our Wi-Fi usage from February to March has increased one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven percent. Um, yeah, so there are definitely people that are um using the Wi-Fi after hours or um, for a variety of reasons. Um, the other thing that we had were tubs out front to have people to take books. Um, but unfortunately, because of the social distancing and um other things that the governor ha- has sent down, we've decided to pull those for the moment. Um, if the regulations are relaxed somewhat, we will um maybe try to put those back out. Um, depending on what the advice is from the Health Department. Uh, we are in contact with the State Library as far as providing library services in this time. Um, the other thing, we have a iSpy window that we've put up in the children's window that my children's and YA librarian worked on. Um, so people who are walking and practicing social distancing will have something to look at and do. My staff um currently is, they are all working from home. I'm the one in the office to maintain the mail and um the book drop, et cetera. Um, but uh they are creating digital content for uh the library Facebook page and webpage. And we've been posting links that are educational on our webpage for kids. So those are the things that we're doing. We're trying to maintain um contact with our patrons. Uh, uh Rita, my homebound person, and I both wrote notes to all of our homebound patrons and mailed those out uh today. Um, because I'm sure they're going crazy because sometimes the only social contact they get is us. So those are just things that we're trying to do um to keep in connection with our patrons at this time. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Appreciate your patience. As uh we get through the closures, hopefully the library will be open sooner than later and everybody be back in there doing what they do. Thanks to Department Chief Warburton.
Good evening. Uh, the law enforcement hiring co-op met here on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth here in Spencer this time. Um, was kind of a different set of circumstances here. We had to do it in four separate waves. Um, so that way we could only have five people uh testing at a time. Uh, through all of that, um, the Civil Service met on March thirty-first and they certified a list of eight. Um, and I'm happy to announce that Matthew Molina has accepted an offer uh from the Police Department. Uh, he's a certified officer uh from Storm Lake with approximately five years' experience. So we're very excited uh to see him start here. Attended start date for him is April twenty-seventh. Um, I'd like to do a little shout out here to Jeff Messerall with the uh Spencer Hospital. Uh, he came to the Police Department today and fit tested half of the uh Police Department for their N-ninety-five mask. And he did a wonderful job. Uh, he will be back on Thursday to fit test the uh rest of the N-ninety-five mask. Um, also like some of the rest of the departments, um. We pretty much have, the way our shifts are designed, uh, it's pretty much half the department working uh at a time, doing the best to separate and, and isolate our officers. Um, but to let you guys know that we're also doing that with dispatch. Um, so our dispatch is isolated from the rest of the department to try to give them the uh best chance on um not co-mingling with the rest of the department to uh contract the coronavirus. So uh, I can't say enough of how critical the dispatch center is uh for all of uh EMS. So um, but otherwise, it's all I have.
Brian, uh, excuse me, Mark, um. Will they wear those masks at all times while on shift or just when uh interacting with people?
The N-ninety-five mask will only be used when we're around somebody that is uh symptomatic uh to the coronavirus. We're trying to conserve as much of our PPE as we possibly can. Uh, the city as well as the Police Department, Fire Department are all trying to acquire the surgical mask that you see uh that the CDC is now uh recommending that we wear. Uh, they will be wearing them uh as soon as we acquire them when they're out in the public.
And how about phone calls in regards to the parks, uh businesses that aren't observing anything going on there?
We've had a few phone calls uh regarding some businesses that may not have been um uh following uh the governor's proclamation, but uh we were able to just simply uh give them the information, uh printed information as well as maybe a friendly phone call. And so far, that's all that it has taken uh for us to gain compliance. So uh, the City of Spencer, the businesses um have really stepped up and we've had no issues.
How do they handle a, like a traffic stop? Sanitizing themselves afterwards and that sort of thing?
Sure. So the driver's license, uh, we're actually going ahead and, and having them um show the driver's license to the officer, but never actually taking possession of that driver's license. So we're either recording uh the driver's license number without actually physically taking possession of it. And then they're handling it that way. A lot of times they can issue the uh citations in the mail if we need to do that. Um, as well as uh the jail is no longer accepting um like simple misdemeanor type of arrests. So uh, those kind of things are actually getting uh pushed to court appearance required. And at a later date, they will actually be uh brought in and pictured and printed uh when this is over with.
Are you seeing a drop in calls and things like that uh compared to what we're seeing across the state and the country?
Yeah, we are uh most definitely. And I think it's just because people are home. You know, you, you gotta remember that our residential burglaries or anything like that, this is all, everybody's, everybody is at home right now. And uh, and they really have nothing to do. So they're either looking on social media or looking out the window. So you can kind of imagine uh some of the calls that we're getting. But um, yeah, other than that, it's, it's definitely a slower time right now. Our domestic disturbances are up. Uh, when you start bringing those kind of people, you know, when you're bringing people together, family and spending that much time together, uh, we're having some of those issues. Um, but really, for the most part, our general calls are definitely now.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have anything else for Chief? All right, I must say between the two stories that uh you and Officer Hanson uh read, thank you for that. Uh, the clearly the characters in the book that you had far outshone the ones that Officer Hanson had. I mean, the role of the mayor is key, it seems like, in that visit to the jail. So, well done.
I hope I got the grumpiness of the mayor correct in my story.
Well, we can't wait for the next book, Chief. Good job. Public Works, Mark? Oh, Fire Department? Oh, we don't want to skip you, uh Chief Conian. Your video's turned off, so I jumped right over. Sorry. I skipped you two times ago, I guess, didn't I? John, are you on?
Yeah, I hope so. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, real good. Um, kudos. You know, Curious George also visited a fire station, just on a sidebar. Uh, we'll get to that. Um, really dealing with the COVID nineteen. Uh, we've done some really uh strong training with the hospital um as far as uh what PPE to wear and concerns and how to uh, you know, Don and Doft and what procedures are needed. As Mark said earlier to you, uh, the N-ninety-five mask is strictly for aerosolized uh, you know, uh, conditions and uh you know, events such as intubating, or if you're working with a heart attack. We're also trained now to wear all our garb if we go to a DOA and to treat DOAs as a uh true COVID type of person. Um, so from the COVID standpoint, you know, everybody's doing their due diligence. We too are uh uh taking our temperatures uh twice a day. Um, and anytime uh when a volunteer comes in, we're also taking it. Anybody that's working on EMS also comes in to take their temperatures as well. Um, over the past month prior to uh St. Patrick's Day, we uh did get some training. We also attended Family Fest and it was a good deal. So other than that, it's short and brief. Uh, thanks for putting up with us.
Any questions for John? All right, thank you, Chief. Public Works, Mark White.
Uh, good, good evening, everybody. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for working with this in this new format. It'll get better the next time as we go. Takes a little practice. COVID-19 will affect everybody and every aspect of life and, and that certainly isn't, is the case, the Public Works Department as well. We did have some issues, some calls regarding the recycling bin at Walmart. We ended up with the above normal contamination. So please help us police that. We had good response on SpencerRecycles.com. And that would like to mention makes changes always. So previously it was only open on Saturday mornings to county residents only from 8 to noon. The facility will now be open from 8 to 5 for county and city residents. For residential garbage and residential recycling. We will not accept any appliances, higher sea waste or hazardous household materials, anything like that. We'll be open 8 to 5 this, every Saturday. It's on maintenance for Spencer and county residents. We still not, we'll, we still won't be accepting commercial products as far as commercial demolition or shingles. But we made the change to serve the needs for the community. Also with the street division, you know, we've currently ran split shifts and those split shifts will now, and those were split start times. So we'll now move to alternating weeks. As you can imagine, when we lose some work time, that certainly affects the maintenance and most of the street division's responsibility, responsibility. So there were some issues, try to work from home, current fill in puddles, doorwork, sign around manhole or impacts are the ones that, that are working on. And ongoing maintenance as well. The landfill, we installed a plexiglass shield. Do you see at the retail stores and try to make a separation. We will start receiving commercial solid waste at the landfill in Gretninger starting Monday. Been receiving waste from our contract callers, our counties, but we will start servicing the needs. We've had some conversations with the Iowa DNR. That was the right thing to do with improved safety measures. I won't go into all the details of the changes operationally we've made for safety improvements there, but that would be it. Unless we have any questions.
Questions for Mark?
Yeah, I do, Mark. You made a comment about the shingles and stuff. That doesn't mean that shingling companies are on hiatus right now, does it? Or are you just talking about from private individuals?
Apparently everybody, all contractors is on hiatus right now. They won't be able to go through the transfer station, but as of Monday, they'll be able to go directly to the landfill in Gretninger.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? Okay, Park and Recreation, Jared.
Good evening. Here lately, we've been dealing with, keeping an eye on recommendations and guidelines.
I might not have my speakers on.
For, you know, COVID-19 and doing park closures and making sure we have the proper signage for those. We've been taking a lot of phone calls and answering questions in relation to those as well. And so we'll continue to monitor what other cities are doing, what some of the recommendations are coming out as far as parks and trails and open, open spaces and continue to move forward on that. We're continuing to develop, you know, our work priorities, projects and work schedules in response to this COVID-19. So you know, when things start ramping up here and different projects, we're, we're trying to prioritize those and do something similar to what Public Works is doing and staggering start times for employees and that sort of thing when we start bringing a couple on. We're still trying to continue to move forward with projects like normal springtime activities the best we can. But like I said, we'll still prioritize those. The master plan, we're still in contact with Stockwell. They're still working on that master plan. And I think we'll probably have to develop another public meeting via Zoom meeting, something similar to this. Or they record a meeting and then we put it out and they have a, an area for people to answer questions and in a format for that as well. So starting to get a lot of tree calls as well. You know, asking about tree removals and tree trimming and that sort of thing. So we're going to keep moving forward with that. That's kind of it for now. If you have any questions.
Any questions for Jared? Thank you. Golf course, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The golf course has been open now for eight days under the COVID-19 provisions. Staff as well as the golfing population are aware that we're day by day. So we're trying to do the best that we can to create a safe environment out there for people to play golf, give them a chance to get some recreation. Obviously, there's been lots of questions about parks, golf courses, other things. Amanda did a nice job this morning on the radio. That was good. I guess the main thing that I keep trying to share with people is that there's all of the amenity items have been removed from the golf course. So we don't have any ball washers, benches, water coolers, none of that stuff's on the course. So the things that are people, that are people are able to actually touch out there have been extremely limited. The cup is raised inch and a half or so above the green surface. So there's no need to touch the flagstick or any of that. And we're trying to keep everything sanitized over and over throughout the day. I think I've shared all that information with you guys past week and we're going to wake up tomorrow and do it all over again, I guess. And I'm sure that we're all in the same boat, wishing that this would get over with sooner than later. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Brian?
Yes.
Lauren's got one.
You spoke about the public and the patrons about yourself, operating equipment and so forth. You guys being able to keep that sanitized for your own protection?
Yes, once an individual is done operating a piece of equipment, then it is sanitized just the same as we're doing with the golf course carts and whatever else that's being touched by the public. So we're going through the same process that people that are playing golf are doing as well.
Excellent.
All right. Anybody have anything else for Brian? All right. City Attorney, Don.
Thank you, Mayor. Our status is we're here working. Two of the staff are working from home. The four of us are here. We're of course trying to follow the guidelines and eliminate person to person as much as we can. But we're, we're staying busy. March for the city of Spencer was a busy month. Eighty-five percent was typical sorts of things. About fifteen percent involved supporting the staff and, and working on pandemic issues. Unless there are questions, that's really all I have to report.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Don? All right, hearing done. Item seven, engineers report. I see Ross is on there.
Yeah, we've been, been busy the last couple of weeks putting together the competitive quote packets for the rest of the maintenance jobs. Those include the Sealco project, crack and joint sealing and concrete patching. Those quotes, those three quotes will be taken within the next couple of weeks. So I'd say by, by the first meeting of May, we'll have those ready to hopefully award a contract. Last week, we submitted final plans to the DOT for the Fourth Avenue Southwest Bike Trail. That letting is set for June 16th currently. And Ron, for your question for the 2020 West Fore Street Underground Improvements, that section from First Avenue to Second Avenue has fifty consecutive working days with a completion date of October 15th, 2020. Any other questions?
You already wearing your t-shirt and shorts, Ross? Is that why your video's not on?
I'm wearing my work attire, I guess.
Okay, we'll go with that. Go with that. Any questions for Ross? Okay, item eight, city manager's report. Amanda?
I don't have a headline. It's too complex. Other than I just want to express my appreciation for the staff. Everyone who jumps on our call at 4:30, Jeff Messerall with the hospital. It's hard to believe that it's, it's been four months that we've been still on pandemic planning and but it has been as seamless as we can make it. And I appreciate all the efforts that, that everyone's putting in. And with that, I'll yield my time to the mayor. He's got a lot more to say than I do.
You done already?
I'm done.
Any questions for Amanda? Kick the ball over pretty early.
Questions to the mayor.
Okay, well, item nine, mayor's report. I remember as a child, we took a family vacation around Lake Superior. When I say around Lake Superior, I mean all the way around Lake Superior into Canada, back around the Michigan. And I remember pine trees were pretty cool the first two days. And after that, I got really tired of them. And it feels like as a community, we're on that long trip around Lake Superior that took two weeks. So we're in the beginning stages of this, hopefully almost halfway through this. If you look at all the projections and things of that nature. So we've been asking the state and other places how we unwind from all the things that we're winding up. And we don't have any answers to that right now, but just anticipate that we're going to be in the car a little longer on this vacation altogether. And we appreciate everybody's compliance as well as everybody just having a positive attitude towards this. I want to thank Century Farms Distillery and Westo Brewery as they're making hand sanitizer for the community. I believe they're making it for individuals as well as businesses. So thank, thank them for that. Quick update from the governor today. She did add some additional closings. I just want to read those really quick. So today she added malls, tobacco or vaping stores, toy gaming, music instrument, movie or adult entertainment stores, social and fraternal clubs, including those at golf courses. So the clarification on that, the courts can be opened, the clubhouse, you can do your transaction in, but no meetings, no, you know, lunches nor anything like that at any clubhouse associated with a golf course in the state of Iowa. Bingo halls, bowling alleys, pool halls, arcades and amusement parks, racetracks and speedways, roller and ice skating rinks and skate parks, outdoor and indoor playgrounds or children's play centers and campgrounds. And I read that to remind the public that our role as your governments and the leaders of the government is to try to create an environment in which you are safe. And we don't make these decisions lightly and we don't try to make decisions that take away your personal freedoms. But there are orders by the governor of the state of Iowa that we also have to honor and enforce locally. And that is what we are doing. We do have a request for masks. So today on our daily leadership call that I've talked about before, CDC came out this weekend and recommended the use of cloth masks or any type of mask. Could be a dust mask in public. Quick clarification on that. So the purpose of those masks are not to prevent the COVID virus from entering your body. It's really to prevent the spread through the droplets coming out of your mouth. Especially if you're asymptomatic. So the, the recommendation to wear them in public. I am going to have a quick discussion with the council. They can chime in here. Because we're an essential service and we have essential employees, we've taken steps up till now that the CDC has recommended such as spacing the workforce out, getting people to work from home, social distancing, closing the building to eliminate contact. I would make the recommendation and curious to get the council's thought on because our employees are essential when they're out in public, the CDC has recommended everyone wear masks, some type of mask. It's going to take a while to ramp up to get these masks, but I want to get the council's thoughts on that before just saying that everybody should wear a mask. That's what the CDC has recommended and I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Mayor, I just think it sends a good message. If the citizens of Spencer, sitting in their house or out in their yard sees us, then a Spencer employee with mask on, I think it just sends a good message to the rest of the community.
I agree. I think we certainly have to, I think we certainly have to follow CDC guidelines. I mean, that's not rocket science.
Do you, are you able to get masks for the employees?
We would, we've had people in the community express an interest in making CDC recommended cloth masks. And so at this time, if the council's on board, I would like to make the request out to the community if there are people who would like to make masks on our call today between the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, the Fire Department, those key essential people, as well as, I guess we didn't add our general staff. So just in the Sheriff, Police and Fire Department, you're looking at roughly 300 masks. That's about 150 people times two. So if they wear one plus can wash one, so that'd be 300. And then Eric Pickus from EMS chimed in about rural providers. So all those other key law enforcement and fire out there is another hundred. So we'd be looking at just for that side of it, 400 masks. And I don't know, we have a staff of 185 or so. So if you double that, 160, so three, 400, 500, you know, ideally, we can't get there tomorrow morning, obviously, but if we could somehow come around, around 500 masks, that would be fantastic.
I thought it was interesting. I was a fairway today to check out gals who had masks on. And some church or several churches had brought in a supply of masks for the employees at the grocery store.
Say, Mayor, one comment. So if somebody's out in the field and they're solo, they're by themselves, not working with a counterpart, would it be appropriate for them not to have to wear that mask? Only, again, only from the standpoint if they're going to interact with another person or if they're outside working somewhere, let's say in the cemetery, mowing or whatever, would they have to wear one then? Or is it only when you're coming in contact with folks?
Well, it's a good question. So the CDC came out, obviously, and recommended, it's a recommendation, right? Not a, not a law. And they recommended out in public, I think the intent of theirs was when you're in proximity of other, other people, right? And so I would kick it back to the council and staff to help you know, walk through Lauren's question about if somebody's not around other people, you know, what, what would the expectation be?
It might be, it might be hard to police, but I'm just kind of going, if a guy's working by himself all the time or the gal, whoever. You know, I'll pick on Mark White's situation over the landfill. Guy's running the piece of equipment, he's out in the diamond stump, what, X percent of the time? Would it really be necessary for him to be wearing a mask instead of a cab? What have you, driving a truck?
Or the guy sitting in the lawnmower all day long by himself?
Yeah. You know, maybe those with, as you stair stepped, this is more critical for those folks. It's got to be amongst people.
Good, good questions. I, I would think that the job side of it, we probably need to work through at this point. If we could get a consensus maybe on, you know, when the work is done, when you're not at work. So it's after work or before work. Should the, should the employees be following the CDC guidelines? We can probably get into the work stuff. That's what I'm looking for.
Mayor, just to comment, you know, on our call today, it was asked, well, if I'm out with my, with my family on a walk, should we be wearing masks? You know, it's just us. We're not intending to come in contact with anyone. And the response was yes. Anytime you're out in the public, the CDC is recommending that you wear a mask. If anything, like the mayor said, it's to prevent the spread if you're asymptomatic. Now, if we've got an employee at the landfill who's in a, in the Algon all day by themselves, you know, we could probably have some discretion there. But, you know, the I, I would even, I guess, maybe push back a little bit on somebody sitting on a mower. They have a likelihood of coming into contact with people throughout the day who are going to be on the trail system or just out in the community. And I guess I'd, I'd rather err on the side of caution than, than ours. But we don't have masks right now. So those are decisions that'll have to come when we, when we get them. But the recommendation from, from the hospital today in, you know, But the recommendation from, from the hospital today in, you know, in alignment with the C D C was that anytime anyone is outside, they should be wearing a mask, whether you're intending to be around people or not.
And, and another side of that is that if you have somebody working in a piece of equipment and they feel fine, and then all of a sudden a week later, they don't feel fine, then they've possibly contaminated that piece of equipment. And, and there's a lot of things that come into it. So it's a weird, this is a weird virus.
So what happened to the six foot rule?
The six foot rule is still in place. They just added the, uh, so prior to this, they had said you don't need to bother to wear a mask because it was seen from the, the outside in, the mask wasn't gonna protect you. The cloth mask doesn't protect you from getting the virus. They have since now done more tests and, and feel like the cloth mask catches the droplets coming out of your mouth that the, uh, virus is on. And therefore, if you're asymptomatic, it reduces the likelihood of exposing somebody else to it. Um, is the, the standpoint that Jeff, um, from the hospital had said was the reason why they changed the stance on the, uh, cloth.
I would also, uh, comment that if you're outside, you never know which direction the wind's coming from. And if it's behind you, you're gonna, uh, exude those, uh, much farther than six feet. And, uh, it, it looks to me like we're, we should stick to the mask. And I know myself, but it's gonna be hard. I'm gonna have to, uh, get used to masks because I've been out for walks. You have little kids run up to you that you have no control over. Um, that, uh, their mothers don't control them and, and they're hard to control. I know I've raised six kids of my own. But, um, it's just so easy to, um, and, and those kids, it's a problem. They, they're probably not going to get sick from it, but they take it home to their grandma and grandpa possibly, especially if they're babysitting with them. And that's where the danger comes in.
Anybody else have an opinion?
Mayor, we're only talking about while the employees are on the job, right? We aren't talking about their home life. Cause I want to talk to Don about that, being there is no.
Correct. So goo- good, good question, Ron. So really all I'm asking for, um, tonight is to have the council, um, recommend, um, in accordance with what the C D C has stated, is that when people are out in public that they wear a mask. And so it's not a recommendation beyond what the C D C has said. It's, uh, nothing, um, contrary to, it's really just, we've been following what the C D C has recommended as we've gone throughout this process. Um, this is a change over the weekend. Uh, today is Monday. And because we have essential staff members, I just wanted a, a unified message, um, to them that what the C D C said is important. The reason they said it is important. And, uh, we're, we, you know, we certainly endorse what they have said and encourage them to wear masks while they're in public. I, I think the whole on the job at home, that, that's, you know, that's something else. Um, I'm, I'm really just saying, hey, what the C D C's recommended, we, we agree with. And, you know, please consider following that and wearing a mask when you're in public. It just helps.
Yeah, I'm in favor of them wearing a mask is, especially as they come available. I know they're hard to get right now. And I know even people making them, it's a slow process. So, uh, we're trying to make them for our company also right now, but we only have one sewing machine and it does take some time. So. And then the next thing is, is trying to get all the material and stuff. But as they come available, I think they need to go out to the departments first that are involved more with the public. And then, you know, filter down to where, yeah, when we have them available, that they need to be wearing them while they're working. So.
Mayor, are you looking for a motion on this or somebody to, um, bring one out or?
No, I don't, I don't think it's an official action. I, I really just, I, it wasn't something that I wanted to say in a press release without having a council discussion first and just making sure it is something that we're all on board with and, and just following what the C D C, you know, says.
Okay. All right.
Okay, oops, go ahead. George?
I see. I agree with, uh, your, uh, comments on that, that I think that we should put that information on.
Okay, thank you. A real quick reminder, the underlying medical conditions, um, that is why the mask is important. So for the public, uh, blood disorders, chronic kidney disease, chronic liver disease, compromised, compromised immune system, current or recent pregnancy, um, endocrine disorders, metabolic disorders, heart disease, lung disease, and any neurological, uh, conditions. And so those are all further at risk. And that's, uh, certainly a big reason why we want to make sure everybody's wearing those masks. Good news, we've been working on a project for probably two years, some of us, some of us shorter. Uh, you'll see it coming up on the agenda. I want the public to know that we will have, uh, an A T V ordinance discussion that will start in, uh, committee. Um, Amanda will talk about that here at the next agenda item, but I know there's been several interested parties. People have reached out and, uh, so we're, are gonna move that committee, uh, that discussion forward in committee. Um, this is the longest hair I've had since probably four years old. I don't know about you all, but, uh, it's getting there. I'm ready for this to be done. And we'll do a Facebook Live at noon tomorrow. If the public wants to tune in, we'll, I assume we'll probably post it on social media too, but, uh, noon. And, uh, I'm, I'm gonna volunteer to have them grill me. So we'll do a Q and A with, uh, the mayor and move forward from there. If there's somebody else we want to bring on, we will, but just want people to be aware of that and appreciate everything everybody's doing. Everybody's lives are upside down and crazy, and, uh, we're gonna get through it one day at a time. That I would entertain any questions. Okay, upcoming council committee reports.
Uh, I'd like to make one comment. We have been able to, uh, figure out the technology in the new council chambers. So our council meetings, including the one we are currently on, are now being live streamed to Facebook. All right. Well, they will be live streamed to Facebook. Yeah. Anyway, um, our next regularly scheduled council meeting is April twentieth. Um, we will plan to see you all on the screens again then. And I sent an email today to the public safety, which is Tom, Tracy, and Ron. Seeing if next Monday, if I was early, we'd work to have a public safety committee meeting. So check your email and let me know. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims.
Don't move.
By Lauren, second by Bill, or vice versa. Got my speakers off here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, pre- premature there. Anybody have any questions regarding the motion on the bills and claims? No. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 As opposed, motion carries. Any other opportunity to address the council? Would anybody like some time?
Uh, Mayor, I got one thing. Uh, um, I had a business from headquarters and Paul's approached me on wanting to possibly open up a place in Spencer area. So I would like to see if we can get the Economic Development Committee set up to, or scheduled so we can kind of talk about that.
You want to just reach out to him, Amanda? Email everyone. See, okay. Sounds good, Donovan. Amanda will reach out to the, uh, Economic Development Committee to get one scheduled. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Brian?
Quick. Right up there. Right now, we're through Facebook Live, um, additions that, um, Kevin in the hospital and that has done. So those are available on our YouTube channel, uh, City of Spencer, Iowa. Um, so if anyone who's out there, Stripe, if you have that, it's available. Hopefully, um, sometime either Friday or tomorrow, we'll get the, up there, well, that, that will be live and it will come up immediately following the meeting. Um, but yeah, so those two will work on our technology, which is, I guess, three or four weeks from now. So.
What was the site again? What was the name? Just City of Spencer?
Would you?
What's the, we go to YouTube, what do you type in to get City of Spencer? Is it just City of Spencer?
It's, it's U, U, or City of Spencer, Iowa.
Okay, thank you.
And then you should see it, when I search it, you should see our logo, um, there on that. So, and it is easiest way, you can, is go to our city webpage and clear bottom, it has the social media icon.
Okay.
Um, there, that YouTube channel on.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Anybody have anything else for the good of the order? Would entertain a motion, good, Jared? Oh, sorry. After adjourned. So we gotta move it up.
I'm taking a motion, we move into closed session.
We've got a first by Bill. Second by Donovan to move into closed section. So we will make the necessary arrangements and, uh, moving to close.